Are we recording?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll now call the city council meetings ordered for July 12th, 6:00 PM. The last invitation is Doug Leaden, invitation given by Councilwoman Erin Birk.
Mr. Bauer has this. Father, we have to thank you for allowing us to leave this city. We ask you to let us leave what you desire it to be. Lord, thank you for allowing us to take care of our citizens and our city of Avon Park. We ask you to bless all of our leaders from the top to the bottom. Father God, we ask you to bless our citizens. Bestest blessed blessing in thy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can see this. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Jim, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Nope. Nope, you're still muted, Jim.
Doing everything I can.
He's obviously here. Here.
Yeah, of course.
Hopefully you can get it worked out in a second.
Yeah.
We'll start with the minutes anyhow. We have minutes from June 28th, 2021. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions? If so, Jim, just wave your hand. I see. Perhaps he could get on the phone and maybe one of you guys have your phone open so you can verbally respond that way.
Nope.
Maybe.
About now.
We have a motion in a second for the consent agenda. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Maybe you can raise your hand, maybe. Jim, raise your hand if you say yes. Okay.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing handle.
All right, next up, we have item number five. This is contract for asbestos removal for 42 North Railroad Street. This is Mr. Randy LaBelle, closing for him.
Yes, sir, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Your mayor.
I told. I told him to hate himself tonight.
I'm used to magistrate hearing, sorry.
Hey, Jim.
Mayor Anderson.
Okay, I can hear you. I'm gonna just leave you on my phone number.
I was asked to get three quotes for asbestos remediation results of earlier surveys regarding asbestos for the two locations to be demoed, 908 Dial Street and 44 or 42 North Railroad. So I did, actually ended up getting four of them instead of three. I did reach out to EPI, which does a lot of the demo projects for the city. And I asked who they use as well. So that was it. They came in late, but that was a fourth one. The top one that came in both were for both, or excuse me, both properties, was JES asbestos. And it came in at right around $8,420. But they had a stipulation there that if they came and didn't at the same time, they would knock it down to $7,500 for both. And that's why we're here.
Better than that? That was for JES.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, on the phone.
Just over my phone and not the microphone.
Sorry.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll make it. So the only question I had was not necessarily pertaining to this individual property, but just for, you know, the distant future was, is it, does it make financial sense for us to do these types of projects for tearing the house down when, in this case, you know, we don't own the property, we're never probably going to own the property. If it has lean against it, there's never gonna be a house there. It's just gonna be torn down to basically a lot and it's gonna probably languish as such.
Well, you know, cut here.
It may make sense for you to go through the process of, if they don't correct the situation, to build up the leans to the point where you foreclose and own the property, then do the asbestos removal and all that. Because at least you have something at the end that can either be donated to Habitat or similar nonprofit or sold at some later date for value to try and recover the cost. Because usually these situations, they're never gonna have the money to pay this, you know, let alone the cost of tearing it down and cleaning it up and so on. So about there. That would be the wisest thing I think to do at that point is foreclose first, then remove.
Do we have any leans on it currently?
Yeah, it's anticipation of that question. Ashley left early. I was, she had an emergency that she was doing a lean search. There are leans, there's also payment fees on these properties. I did a little bit of figures, basically for the two locations from about lean without anything else, you're talking at around $21,660 cost to the city for two locations. That includes demo. That's the survey, the asbestos remediation, and the actual demo itself. You're never gonna get that money or that money back. But that is a great, what you said, that certainly is something. These have been sitting around since 2019. Prior to my tenure with the city, I found them basically in some files. I saw the demo orders. One of them I actually took back to the magistrate because I didn't like the way the order was written from the prior magistrate, who I believe was Mr. Dawson. So we took it back to Mr. Dennis. He then gave them a clear order of demolition. And that's where we're at. Yeah, in the future, I'm open, these are very cumbersome and expensive and money that's really not in the budget. I think there's tax amounts that I know exceeds that, that we're defined right now, so.
Well, the unfortunate part is that with the market being so high, if we own the property, we could probably sell it as is, and some developer would do all this for us.
I can affirm that because I've actually had a couple of calls on some that we haven't, that have been recommended to be demoed, but we have not went forward with the actual process because of the expense. So yeah, I've got about three different investors that have called and asking about the properties.
Yeah, and then you almost immediately get it back into private hands. It's occupied, it's either being rented or used as a home. That's ultimately what we want to happen, not just be able to lock.
I didn't look it up online, but are the taxes up to date on this? Or did someone buy the taxes?
I have not looked at the taxes, but I am very surprised that they are. Because we've got numerous attempts at different locations or trying to get hold of people and getting a response, since certified, but I guess.
Yeah, so if someone bought them, they're just waiting for us to clean it up, exactly.
Yeah, well, and you know, as well as I say, I don't know what it is, but after so many years of taxes and careers, I could go after that property. But yeah, they could, I know we've been seeing quite a few of the tax sales here recently.
Seven years, I believe.
Well, the county goes through the process all the way through and nobody buys it.
They end up with it.
We end up holding back. So like we did on some of the properties, that's why I say it's better just to go ahead and if we're gonna do it foreclosed. We own the property, no question, don't worry about taxes. And proceed forward if you want to. Those, these houses are, you know, ice stores for the community, so they'll probably want you to do it at some point.
How long does it take to foreclose? Is it like a two, three-year process in and of itself?
It shouldn't be more than a year, I would think.
I would rather do that, week to.
I agree. And then we don't have to have, you know, wasting our code enforcement time and running down these projects unless we know for a fact that we're gonna do it. But I looked for a local attorney that would handle these for us as a package. And we can start giving to them and so on, but I couldn't find anybody who was interested in it. From a longer perspective, something I was discussing with Jerry is that, you know, it may behoove us to, not only should we be budgeting for these sorts of things. I know that Danielle had mentioned in previous years that we have leans against, you know, a couple hundred properties, more than likely. Yeah, so chances are, there's a whole lot of these that we can do in batches every year. So if we could find us an attorney that we can work with, we could probably send them, you know, a dozen or two dozen at a time. And this is your yearly allotment, and then we know that we can go ahead and budget for that amount. If we proceed forward like that, we could probably find somebody either in like Sarasota or Lakeland or Orlando or someplace like that that might be willing to do it because they could get them all scheduled for one day.
But I mean, if you can't find someone local because you only, they only think there's one case, but yet, well, if we have a batch of 15 to 20, I would think that there would be someone local that would do that because they could do it in the batch perhaps.
I was surprised that anybody was interested in it. I took a couple attorneys, they didn't return my call.
Well, I mean, we can try just a little bit harder because I really, you know, the difficulty with having someone from out of town is that it's out of town, you know, and then it's just the coordination of that typically more expensive as well.
Would it be better to put on a RFP?
I mean, if it's below $10,000 or the, below the city manager's threshold, then he can just do it without and just get free written quotes without going to it.
Well, you know, I mean, the best thing to do would be for the staff to get together and figure out what's the best, the best 20 that we wanna do, then RFP it, like you said. In combination, at least you have a number. You know, we got all these properties and, you know, periodically we'll have similar numbers and have that as an RFP and see what we get. We advertise in Orlando and Sarasota, Fort Myers, whatever, you know, anybody's.
I think that sends, and it sends a real strong message to the next batch of 20 that, you know, we're gonna just come in and do this and we're gonna foreclose on your property. We just can't keep sitting on these, I mean, there's one round corner from me, there's another one two blocks away. All of us have that near us, and I get complaints all the time on houses that just, you know, are falling apart.
Yeah, well, property values are increasing right now. It's probably better to get it done and then try and unload them as a package as well.
Randy, do you have a list of, you know, your top 10, your top 20?
I don't.
Was it based off of dates?
I easily could, yeah, I could get one very easily. I, just to add to what you're saying, I wholeheartedly agree with your assessment. I think it sends a message. Right now, as well as, you know, it's not much of a deterrent. You know, you get a running fine, but it doesn't come into the situation. You go in there and take possession of that property and when you knock the house down and you're owner, you sell that as, it's a win-win for everybody.
Yes.
I wholeheartedly agree with that.
Just gets rehab and autopsy.
Yeah, but I can get you, whatever list that you, I can get that to you within a day.
Can you figure out between the lists that you have, the ones that have, are the lower hanging fruit, like the ones that are local individuals that, you know, versus someone in Tennessee or, you know, New York?
Oh, yeah.
You know, do the local ones first and it just kind of, those will be faster?
Yeah.
And move on to the next.
It would be easier to serve and deal with people on a local basis as opposed to abroad. But yes, we can do any of that.
Yeah, you just run into the issue of you can't do the ones that are homesteaded.
Exactly, you can't home, you can't.
Do we have any that are homesteaded?
I'm sorry?
Are any of these homesteaded properties?
These two are not homesteaded.
I really can't lean on homesteaded property.
Right.
Well, if you don't mind, Randy, get us a list together and we'll see if we can't put this up for RFP. I mean, if worst-case scenario, we end up having to put it for next budget season. Let's make it happen one way or another. At least, at least get a concrete plan for how we're gonna handle this coming forward.
So I guess I would have to confer with Jerry about what constitutes something you wanna go after. Does the ratio of the outstanding lean as opposed to the value of the properties or a percentage, it has to be that, or you can go forward on any.
I'd go with the biggest and longest and the ones that don't have mortgages. Because that compites things.
And then that's gonna develop a decent.
And then, I'm not saying don't ever do those, I'm just saying if you gotta prioritize them, that would be the priority. Of course, at some point, you can do the ones with the mortgages as well.
But you, 15, 20, 10, how many?
Well, I would just keep realistic with 20 right now because, you know, if you RFP for 20 cases, that's gonna get somebody's attention.
So you're saying the title search on a lot of these, that's what, 150 for a title search? And I know everybody right now is boggled down with title searches. It'll take you at least two weeks to get a title search anywhere.
Especially right now.
Yeah.
Maybe going with one company and saying, oh, you're talking about one law firm. Maybe that cuts a little bit better, right, when you get in 20 at a time.
Most law firms will just farm it out to the title search companies. So you're only dealing with one company rather than a title search company and a lawyer's office. I mean, a lawyer's office should be able to do it all.
Jerry, this is gonna be your real estate attorney deals. Chances are, but it doesn't have to be. I mean, any attorney can do it, it's just, it's, it's only slightly, it's complicated, but it's not terribly complicated, it's not taxes, you know, or hazardous waste or something like that. It's just something that they need to have done it before. Otherwise, again, take a lot, spend a lot of time figuring it out. Is it inappropriate for us council members to refer law firms to this? No, I don't, that's not, you know, somebody, you know, when we do the RFP, what you do is you send them direct notice of the RFP, you send it to them directly. That way they don't have to look for it. And that's, you know, anybody that has recommendations or anybody that reads, you know, the newspaper or hears the radio, you know. Yeah. Clearly, that's a good way to go. Okay, so is the council in agreement that we should put this off for now?
Yes.
This would go for item number five and six?
Yes.
I would, you know, I think we've already got this one in the works. Don't you think we should proceed forward with this stuff?
We've already paid for the survey to get it done, and I think it's a great idea. My only thought is if the city ends up with 20 buildings and the roofs falling in, now it's our liability when we have vagrants in them. And I mean, if we turn around and sell it or that, but.
Well, no, I think, I've just suggested, once we foreclose, that we go ahead and do the demos that need to be demoed.
Right, okay, yeah.
If they need to be demoed, we demo.
Okay.
You know, and because, like you said, it could be vagrants, and they're also an ice store for the community.
Well, and some of them are kind of a health and safety issue, like the one that is pretty well bad. I mean, the one on Dial Street.
Yes.
Concerns me because we recently had to abate it again as well, the yard, because of rodents and all that coming from it. That's the one with the fire in the room that has caused significant damage. We're $1,200 into each location with the survey.
Yeah, I would just suggest go ahead with these because we've got investment into it and time and money already.
That, that one in particular is, it's close to 27. You have some homeless people that you've seen around the streets and that. The one on Railroad really isn't attractive as the one on Dial Street is.
And to add to that is, right now, we do have, we have at least $20,000 for demos in the budget. And I think that this is, Mayor pointed out, we need to look and see basically what 20 would cost this and that, and put this in the next year's budget. And we're like three months away, four months away from the next one anyway. So maybe look at, you know, get a top 20 RFPs out, start this next fiscal year. And I'm with Jerry on this, I would recommend moving forward to get things to down. One's done a special magistrate's order since 2019. Both of them since 2019.
Okay, we, we'll put a deadline on it, you know, it doesn't take them more than one year to get it fully accomplished.
And right now, these are the only two you have pending, right, Randy? There's no more?
There's two that have been recommended for demo, but have not moved forward. The recommendation is just Eric Palm short form is to go and saying basically, it's not worth more, or it's not worth as much. If you have to put that much into it, it's gonna be overpriced. So it's not that it's structurally, that there's one on Earth C cents right now that could be demoed, but it's not, I don't, it didn't say it was gonna be a immediate threat to all of our law firms and people, so.
I wouldn't demo anything, we didn't have an order from the special magistrate.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is we have not taken it in front of that.
Yeah, that's all I was getting at, we don't have any kind of, the special magistrate, and we won't take those ones in front of them based on what.
That's our liability protection issue. It's a nuisance and health, safety issue. When he orders it to be demoed, then it goes pretty far.
Has these two properties been before the special magistrate?
Yes.
And then he has approved, he has said that, and what's the cost that had to go to these properties demoed?
Like I said, it's 20, I came up with everything, $21,660. That's what current quotes for the demo and current quote for the abatement. But already money paid out to $2,400.
What, what we've already paid out?
So the city is out $2,400 at this point for both of them, $1,200.
So what we're actually looking at approving tonight would be the asbestos remediation.
That's the $7,500 for both of them.
So the proposal is for JES abatement for $7,500 for both of these properties. $7,500 each, for both, total for both.
So there's a, excuse me, asbestos removal contract? And there's a dollar value in here, $5,420?
Yes.
So that is in addition to another contract?
No, there's two contracts.
Okay.
Well, one, you have a contract that you paid out of the $2,400, that's for the survey. That's for them going there and saying, yep, there's asbestos. The second part, which you were going for tonight, was the actual remediation, taking out of the asbestos products to proceed to the third part, which would be demolition. They can't do the demo until the asbestos is removed.
Okay.
So.
But tonight, you're looking for the approval of the contract that's in here right now. That was the recommended motion, that's the only thing you're looking for tonight.
Correct.
Right?
That's the maintenance, that's the removal of it.
And it would probably be wise to do them both so that we can take advantage of the $7,500.
Yeah, you save $1,200.
So to add the other one to it, though, in order to make the motion for the two properties, so you've got 908 Dial. Right. And what with the other address?
42 Land Railroad. Yeah, I just wanted to additionally comment, it's really, I mean, one way or the other, this has to be done.
Yeah.
So even if you sold it, person's gonna work it into the price that they have the brains.
Right.
And as far as accounting, the seller, the taxes, it can happen anyway, a lot of the city's on it.
Are any of these, are these were both residential, weren't they?
Correct.
Yes.
They've never been a commercial at any point through their lives?
No.
And we have photos in here, but I went actually and physically looked at both of these structures. And I'm telling you, this is horrible.
Yeah.
And if we're having homeless people staying in there, it's just not a good thing.
Neither one is, the one that, the rare one is close with the lot of foliage in front of it, where you don't want to see it until you're up to the gate area. Dial, we've received numerous complaints.
Yes, I can tell.
By neighbors and people that drive, it just doesn't feel good.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the asbestos removal for 908 Dial Street and 42 North Railroad.
A second.
And this would be specifically to JES construction for $7,500 for both?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions? Is Jim Weyman in his arms for questions? He says no. All right, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing handle.
Thank you. Item number seven, we have the WWCP sand and grit removal bid acceptance. We also have a addendum to that. Jerry, do you want to discuss? Okay, so the load bidder has sent a letter to us, basically asking to withdraw the bid and get the bid bond back. And they made an error in their price calculations. And so it's my recommendation to approve their request. And staff in general have recommended to you select the second votes bidder. Who had bid protests, the bid protest goes away. Okay, so this would be for a UTEC bid of $62,750?
It was $53,150, but we have $10,000. Homeless allowance to have to have bad trip.
Yes, her bid is 53,150. Okay, do we have a sound room?
Wait a minute, can I ask a question before we go to the question? For the sake of the audience and the radio people, can someone explain what this is really happening in here? Because I explained this to some people of my understanding.
Rick would love to.
And, and, and let me just say what I, what I, what my understanding is. At our wastewater treatment plant, there are some tanks that have some sand and some grit in it that needs to be cleaned out.
That's correct.
Why, okay, and so now they're saying, so we're saying that this company has tested and came up with a certain amount of sand and grit that needs to be come out of our tanks, right?
Yes.
Now, did they do that? And how did they do that? Because these are questions asked to me and I couldn't answer.
Right, the measurement was done before I had gotten here, but it was, to my understanding, the company had made measurements on the amount, maximum amount of grit and sand within the oxidation ditches. And that was about 137 wet tons. That's just an estimation based upon their protein in the oxidation ditches, which is done fairly commonly. I mean, it's established method to go ahead and estimate the amount of sand and grit in there. Since it was about a year after that, what I wanted to do was, we got a grant from DEP, $89,000 plus like $90,000 to clean this out of the plant for means and operations. You get a lot of good things to do out of it. You don't have to take equipment down, you don't have to interrupt operations. And being that we have limited capacity in that plant, it's the best way to go, so.
So there's limited capacity in it now?
It's got, we've got 1.5 million gallons a day design capacity. We're seeing about 1 million gallons a day right now. Then there's two ditches, each one are designed for about 0.75 million gallons a day. But they can take a little bit more than that. There's always some extra capacity that you put in there as a margin of error. But we're seeing about 1 million gallons a day. If we took one of the ditches down and waited for it to dry out, which, you know, may take quite a while in this kinda weather, and then you put a box cap in there, go ahead and have a backhoe, go ahead and take that grit and sand out, you're pushing all of your volume through one oxidation ditch. So you're degrading, very possibly degrading treatment capacity. So the best thing to do is keep both ditches in operation while you remove this sand and grit.
Okay, my next question.
I'd like to add, this is the same project we did probably back in 2016 with Julian, we're still here, same grant and everything.
Are we doing it again? Yeah, we doing it again?
It, it's happening because our headworks are inoperable. And so there's no screening of the grit and sand before it gets into the oxidation ditches. That's why we have a new headworks being designed and that's been out of a bid and that we're receiving bids on. And by this time next year, we'll have a fully operational headwork.
So then, headworks is gonna have a grit chamber?
Yes, absolutely, grit separator and screening, it's very good system.
So we do this, there's no, you have to do this.
And what's paying for the new one?
What's paying for the new one? Well, that's something we're gonna come to you to ask for.
So there's not a bid that's open right now that?
We are collecting bid right now. The opening, I believe, is on the, it's collecting bid on the 13th. I believe, I believe it's next, no, I believe it's the 29th, I'm sorry. We're, the bid opening, we've had to extend it a couple times.
So to follow up with Brenda's question, when, you know, I was looking at the referrals, not referrals, but the opinions of prior businesses that have used this particular bidder, and none of them were favorable. So, but those are the ones that you're, that's the company that you're recommending?
No, no, that's a company that's dropping out.
Okay, so they changed their name? It was UTEC and now it's international something?
They operate under a name and Jerry has to help me here.
Okay, it was from Oregon or something, anyway?
So they, they had one bad review, they had one that was not, no answer, and they had another one that was good, you know. And so the problem with, the problem with the name was that they had, they were operating under a name that was neither a corporation in the state of Florida nor a DBA, doing business as. And so I informed them they couldn't do business in the state of Florida unless they were one or the other. And they decided to go with a corporate name from our state and get that registered.
But they're bumped out because of the change?
They've had to be bumped out.
Okay, so we're not even gonna consider them anymore, right?
Right, that's, well, you need, you need to vote on that.
We gotta vote.
I can't, I can't just tell you not to.
Okay, I just have another question, so in regards to the actual use of the, the ditches, you're saying that we are using in excess of a million a day?
Yeah, our, our flow through the plant is about a million gallons a day right now with all the rain that we're seeing. We're well within capacity because the plant as a whole can treat one point five.
Right.
But that's two, that's two point seven five oxidation ditches, so in my opinion, it is not a good idea to take one ditch out of commission to clean it and then to put it back in commission and take the other one out, particularly since we have so much rain and we're running near, even without the rain, we're running about the capacity of one ditch. So we need to have both ditches running at the same time.
So this is all, this is all because of weather that you wouldn't want to dry it out?
No, no, I, it, it was not raining and we were seeing one million gallons a day through the two ditches, I would still not want to take one ditch out because like I said, they're designed for point seven five million gallons a day. There's always a safety margin you can put on them, they can safely treat maybe point eight, maybe point nine, maybe one million gallons a day. What happens is when you take one half of the plant down, the wastewater, it's gonna go through it twice as fast as it had to. And the bugs in the treatment process need that time, they need oxygen to degrade, the bio aid, the food that's in there. The less time they have, the less treatment you're going to get.
And if they're, if they're each point seven five mg/d, wouldn't you also need to get DEP's approval or take one of those ditches out?
Yes, yes, we would, yes, and, and they approved this based upon the fact that we've got both of them in, in operation.
So let me ask one other question, so the grant that we received is, is eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, right? And the, the cost of this agency to clean out our tanks is going to be what?
Fifty-three one fifty.
No, I think that's, that's the one that's going out, what's the, what's the second lowest bidder?
Oh, it was eighty-seven thousand five hundred, I believe.
And is that an ongoing cost or is this a one-time thing or six months down the road, they gonna say, oh, now we found another thirty gallons of grit and grain or whatever and it's gonna cost another twenty-five thousand dollars?
No matter how good your headworks are, of which we don't have a functioning headworks now, you're gonna get grit and sand into the oxidation ditch, it's a matter of volume. Once we have that oxidation and once we have the headworks operational, we'll get very small amounts of sand and grit in there. So by the time they clean this out and we get the headworks, the new headworks instructed, we'll have minimal amounts of sand in there and even less we'll be going in on a regular basis.
What was the engineer's estimate, what did it cost to, to do this? Is that what the beginning of eighty-nine, eight-seventy is?
Well, yeah, that, that's, that's US Emergent Technologies' cost to go ahead and do it through one hundred thirty wet tons.
So, in the contract itself also, or at least the bid, it said a hundred and thirty wet tons.
Hundred and thirty wet tons.
And then anything in excess of, in excess of that would be at six seventy-three?
Correct.
Right, per ton? So, what percent of wet sand, or volume rather, is in that tank that equates to one hundred and thirty wet tons? I mean, is there a possibility that there could be another fifteen, twenty tons in there?
Possibly, I, I think the measurement that was done a year or so ago was a hundred thirty-seven. It's not exact, but as they're removing grit and sand, they will have a good count on it.
So who did the study, where's the data that shows that one hundred and thirty-seven, who did that? Was it an engineering firm, was it someone with a pole out there sticking it in the, you know, trying to wiggle it through the, the silt?
Thanks, I wasn't here to do that, I have to look up that information for you. It might have been US Emergent Technologies that came out, I'm not sure.
I, I don't see how it could be anything but a pole.
Yeah, but wouldn't you have to drive, don't they do that cross-sections? If you just go in there with a pole, walking around and just stabbing here and there, there'll be areas that have higher and lower.
In the beginning, there'll be more than that towards the end, because it's a lot heavier.
So I just, my, my only concern is, if it's gonna be more than a hundred and thirty wet tons, did anyone, when the calls were done to the other cities, did it was a question asked based off of, you know, did you get any extra tonnage? If they had a contract with any of these organizations, you know, where they had a set amount of wet tons, what was the average excess of wet tons that were taken out of those systems and how much more did those cities pay that were not part of the grant?
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. We, we did not ask those specifics, we wanted to see how good of a job they did.
Yeah, but what if it's another ninety thousand dollars? Then where would you go?
The grant, let, let me explain something, the, the grant is almost ninety thousand dollars and we have to get out a minimum eighty percent of the grit and the sand that's in there, we don't have to get out a hundred percent. So all along, I think thirty wet tons are gonna take out and I'm gonna see that they get as much out as they can without exceeding the value of that grant and will be well within the eighty percent of, of removal, probably close to ninety percent.
Where did I see twenty to thirty percent, not eighty percent?
I, I don't know, it was only twenty to thirty percent.
Okay, but what you're saying then is that a hundred and thirty wet tons is gonna be about eighty percent of the sand that's in there?
Actually, I think a hundred and thirty wet tons would be more than that. If there was a hundred and thirty wet tons, eighty percent of that, I believe is a hundred and five, eighty percent of that one thirty.
Yeah, as of a year ago.
Hundred and four, hundred and five. So I, I think if we stick to the one hundred and thirty tons, it's gonna be in excess of eighty percent.
So, I'm just gonna backtrack a little bit, I read in the grant that you are eligible to apply for funding to buy equipment and other miscellaneous expenses, so I mean, you could have bought a bobcat with that and done the work yourself? Would there ever be, if we're gonna be do, it, it says something in there, I mean?
He would have to take it down.
I know, I know, I know you'd have to shut it down, but what I'm getting at is, if you were to take out all of this grit and sand for now and you're saying that we're doing this, we did one in two thousand and sixteen? So if we're gonna consider that this is gonna have to get done, I mean, every five years or so, wouldn't we want to budget in the future to be able to do this in the dry season, to see if we can get everything out? Because it seems that you're gonna have this recurring cost.
What he's saying is with the headworks, you will have to do this every five years.
Well, but that's, the headworks is another thing that we haven't even, we haven't budgeted that, right? Or is that another grant?
The headworks was budgeted, but the cost estimates come in above what we budgeted.
By how many millions?
I don't have that number handy right now.
But it is by a million or so?
The budget for the headworks and, and the engineering expectancy came to close to a million dollars and I'm not sure how much was in the budget to mark your head over.
No, again, we still haven't got the bids in. That's our estimates, we haven't got our bids in.
For the, oh, for the, correct, yeah.
No, I don't know, it's budgeted, but he did tell me that if it was estimated, it can probably be more.
Okay, so you're gonna make sure that the funding of the grant does not get exceeded and that you're gonna ensure that the sand and grit that they take out won't exceed a hundred and thirty tons in order to be within the grant, right?
I, I'm going to make sure that we, that we maximize the amount of, of the grant.
All right, and you're?
And that's gonna be a hundred and thirty wet tons plus.
Okay, and you're guaranteeing that there won't be another hundred and thirty tons in there when they're done with the first hundred and thirty tons?
I can't guarantee that, no, but I think logic dictates that, you know, I can have the double amount of grit. The headworks have been inoperable for, I don't know, six or seven years now and it's, it's seen that much, I, I can't guarantee you anything, but.
All right, so if you say there's data that showed there was a hundred and thirty-seven tons is what you said?
That's what I've been told, that's what this grant has reflected on us.
I mean, how did you get that information?
That, that information was part of what I inherited when I came to work here.
But I mean, is it a data or was it just word of mouth?
It's data, I'm assuming.
Is it somewhere written?
Yeah, if, if there was a study, you did the study, was it an engineering firm that did? I mean, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to, we're basing all of this off, off of hearsay.
Right.
And what I'm looking at is that to make sure another six months or another five years, three years down the road that we, you, you come back to us and say, well, we got another forty tons of grit and sand ordering down there.
So look, if you don't get headworks, you can guarantee that at our current capacity, which is what it was five years ago, you're gonna have almost the exact same situation.
But that's what I'm saying.
But if, if you don't do a different headwork, you can guarantee in five years, we'll do this exact same thing.
And, and that's why the headworks are being done, that's why they're being proposed, to be, to be, to be fixed.
But to get to this point right now, we're asking, the grant's gonna pay eighty-nine, we don't know, he's saying that he's gonna stay within the grant and at some point we're gonna have to clean them out again, you're gonna get new headworks, that's, they're starting to get cleaned out or no?
No, i- i- it's a matter of degree. Once you have the headworks in there, you're still gonna get small amounts of grit and sand coming. But it's a matter of treatment, right now, with that hundred and thirty wet tons plus, maybe a hundred forty, might be a hundred fifty, we are achieving our, our treatment, folks. So when we have a hundred tons, a hundred thirty tons or more removed, we're gonna have even better treatment. When the sand does come in there, which will be minimal, once we have the headworks, I, I can't guarantee that we're, we're never gonna exceed our, our limits, but it's, we're not exceeding them now with reduced volume, when we get that much more volume in, it'll be even better.
And it's grant funded.
But my, okay, let me ask you this question, that he said it is grant funded, what else could we do with this grant other than pay for the cleaning out of the?
Nothing, it's for this.
There's nothing else to?
It literally says it in the grant, this is what it's for.
And, and let me say this too, Brenda, that DEP would not give us ninety thousand dollars unless they had engineering data to support the grant. So when this grant was applied for a year or so ago, engineering data would have had to been submitted with it.
And, and let me just, we say, if you had, if you decided you wanted to verify it and have, hire an engineering firm to come out and verify the, the amount of grit right now, you probably add on another fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, but he's saying that there is an engineer because it was part of the grant, but it seems like you heard that it was a hundred and thirty-seven, we're using a hundred and thirty, but we don't have the data to prove it, but there's a grant there, I, I just look at it from the angle of, you're wanting, at least me, I don't know how the other council members feel, to make an approval on something on, on, on hearsay, even though it is a grant, it is taxpayer money, you know, and I mean, could we spend this next year? It just seems as though we've got all this information, but without the actual data that proves that we have a hundred and thirty tons.
Again, I, I would assume that we do because DEP would not give us a ninety thousand dollars without some sort of engineering backup.
So if it means that much to you?
No, I'm just saying, so where, where's the data, you know, where's DEP's note?
So why don't you just put it off for one meeting and then you can ask the DEP where they got the information from?
Well, we should have the grant that we, we submitted, the, the information should be with the grant, right? Every grant I submit, I keep, you know, a copy of everything I submit.
But, but let's say, let's say it comes back and we can't find anything on it, then?
Yeah.
But he said DEP is the one that did it.
Why don't we trust the opinion of our engineer?
Let's just say the DEP just grabbed it, had a dark spot.
Ah, DEP did that.
And, and, and what do we do then?
Is that how it works?
We're not gonna, not going to do this grit removal, we still need to do grit.
No, I understand that, but, you know, I, I'm just saying, okay, if we make a motion to approve it tonight, we're, we're basing it off of an arbitrary number that we don't know where it is, the data.
That's not true.
Well, he just said, no, 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 no one can corroborate where the data comes from.
Okay, but that isn't making it arbitrary.
It is, we're making an arbitrary decision, no data.
All right, so do we have a motion or not, how about that?
Yeah.
Mr. Waylon?
You wanna make a motion? I would love to make a motion. So the motion that we are approving would be for, was it Hydro International?
Yes, Hydro International was the lowest bidder who has.
It's actually UTEC here in Florida, they were the lowest bidder, UTEC.
Okay, so which one are you asking for us to approve?
US.
US. US what?
US Emergent Technologies.
For a total of?
Eighty-seven thousand five hundred.
Eighty-seven thousand five hundred, so move. Yes.
Jerry, do they have that in the motion though, that they're gonna allow the other company to withdraw?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, it's.
Move with that addition. Do we have a second?
Wait a minute, I, I want, I would like to, um, either withdraw, withdraw it, yeah, but if I, if you, are you combining them?
No, we're, yeah, we're combining the motion to vote to remove the one that asked to be removed and then to approve the secondary lowest bidder, which was.
So if I want to one, one yes and one no?
Well, that's not what the motion is, the motion is.
Oh, okay.
The motion is currently for both, so if you don't wanna vote for it, don't vote for it. So we currently have a motion, is there a second? Going once, going twice? I see no second.
I have a question.
Motion for, eliminate, uh, term, uh, allow the UTEC to withdraw the bid first.
So move on that, I move that.
Okay, we have a motion for that, we have a motion, a second, any questions?
I have a question.
No, Jim has a question.
I just wanna clarify when I heard that we're approving Hydro International and we're removing US Emergent Technologies, is that correct?
Currently, the motion is only to remove the lowest bidder, which was UTEC.
Okay, gotcha.
Motion on the floor, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, call it off.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Is there any other mo?
Next motion would be to approve US Emergent for the bid, eighty-seven thousand whatever.
It's, it's eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, all hundred and thirty wet tons and six hundred and forty-seven dollars wet time there.
Okay, anyone making that motion?
Is that to remove them?
Who's gonna move on with this project? What do they wanna do? How are we gonna, how are we gonna get anywhere, are we gonna let the, the silt build or what?
Well, my thought is, I would just like to see the guy, the date of that. And I know you said you didn't do the grant, but like I said, every grant has a comeback of documents with you. That's my thought.
Rick, you have your orders.
And what I'd like to see also is of the silts or the grit that's been removed from other cities that they also be asked how much in excess of what they had and also removed. In other words, what their contract was, did they have an excess removed or did they, you know, was there more?
Okay.
Is this coming for the next meeting?
We assume so.
Yeah, we're, yes, we're hoping to because DEP's already extended this once if not twice for us because this grant came in probably before I started here and without a, Ronnie was already gone and the supervisor was just gonna go out and start taking quotes and I put a stop to that, tell them that, well, they're a piece. We've had this a while, I know they extended it once if not twice on the date, so if we can get all that to get on the next agenda, that'd be good, Rick.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, now we do have an addition to be an interlocal agreement that was provided by Jerry for the Highlands County, Florida and the City of Bayonne Park for removal of emergency disasters to be reprieved.
A lot of stuff before, basically, uh, been negotiating with the county regarding an interlocal agreement for the agreement removal of emergency such as cancers, tornadoes and so on. Well, I think we've gotten as far as we're gonna go from a legal standpoint in this agreement, is everything perfect? No, we kind of feel like the county should cover the costs and, and, um, that it's maybe possibly a, a double taxation issue, but county's negotiated with some good faith, county staff has, they've been, and it's really very helpful to us that the county has, uh, put together the paperwork and everything, they just want to be reimbursed by the city for that portion, which is gonna be fairly small, that they will get reimbursed from FEMA for in these types of events, and so they took it pretty hard in the last hurricane and, and so they were kind of looking for us to share that risk from that point of view, and we kind of felt like, well, this is, that, that's why the county, that's why the county is not a government, government, they're, they're county, the whole county, they're governing the whole county. But I recommend you approve this. If you, and it's not a legal issue to me anymore, it's really more of a, a political issue. You want to discuss it at some point in the future, then. I think we need to get this in place before we get a real hurricane and, and we've got no way of taking care of the debris.
So Jerry, on section three A subsection six, little bit numeral six, do you wanna call it numeral? It says in the second sentence, if the city has other expenses for debris removal which were expended outside this agreement?
Yeah.
What's an example of that?
An example, that would be, let's say, a tree fell down in the middle of Main Street and county said, you know, our guys can't get to it for a couple of days, and you say, well, we gotta get through that right away and hire the contractor to come, come and remove it, that would be a real expense. If there was an area that you want to do an unlikely event. Uh, if there was an area that you want to do in an unlikely event, that you would wanna do an area of yourself for whatever reason, then that would be an area of, apparently the county, we asked the same question. Apparently the county's had that issue, not with us, but with other governments and, and uh so.
So then we would have to pursue those funds for reimbursement on our own without them. So we'll, we'll be dealing with the same agency that the county's dealing with. Technically, right?
Right, yeah.
Right. But I mean, it would be practically the same people.
You know, and this is, this is the, this is the black letter right here. But I will say from a practical standpoint, if it's something they can file for, you have, you know, a small amount of information put in there, I'm sure that they're not gonna split hairs on that. Uh, like I said, they were, they, they, they were very uh helpful and, and uh they, they were negotiating with good faith. Uh, so I mean, I think that this is just covered themselves and uh as you, as saying this.
And then the other thing also, I mean, there's no guarantee that there's gonna be a wholehearted effort on the county's side to pursue any of these federal, state, and funds because it says so in here that if they don't get it, that it's up to us to go ahead and pursue it if they can't get it.
Yep.
So you know, this, this really doesn't, we'll still end up doing it. So, I mean, I understand they'll take out the bulk if, you know, it's not you need it.
I think they have the understanding that if they're gonna, they're gonna apply, they're just gonna cover the, the stop being first. They're gonna do the, the, the application.
But we can always contest what's not reimbursed directly with FEMA ourselves.
I think so, yes.
If we had the backup to do it again.
Sure, but they're gonna have all the backup because what we need to do to work is, it's got, it's got me by GPS and all that stuff. So, um, but, but all I can say is, you know, you can cancel this, you know, with sixty days notice if for some reason, you know, in the future it doesn't work out.
Yeah.
I, I would just say let's give it a chance to work uh unless you wanna, you know, ask the county.
Is this the same one that Lake Placid and Sebring are doing?
Sebring has had, has signed it. Lake Placid is holding out for, uh, last I heard, for um to get them to pay for the whole thing regardless of whether they reimburse it or not. And um we were holding out as well for a period of time, but Sebring signed it. You know, the weight was against us and, you know, we had Elsa come through and I, you know, Sebring and I were starting to chew our nails a little bit, so.
So if we do any removal ourselves that they're, that they can't do, I mean, are, are we positioned to be able to do that with the GPS and all of that and the weight and all that?
For, for all the paperwork that they have to do, I mean, I sat there and talked to Randy at one of the meetings. I know it's bad enough just to share so I was getting reimbursed. But what he was saying, I mean, that they have the pictures, GPS, and they have the staff to do it. And I talked to Randy and I, I had no, I had no problem going forward. It was like I said, I told Jerry when, when Sebring, we found out, signed it and said, Jerry, let's sign it because that last one was too close for me. But, I mean, I think they're gonna come in and, and, you know, if we owe some, we owe some. But again, in sixteen's the big one. If, if they, when is the, we were gonna go to the uh commission?
Yeah, they rescheduled it. I have it on my calendar.
I think it's the twentieth, if that's, whatever the.
We're still trying to pursue the, the, what's the calendar?
When they rule on Lake Placid, whether they're gonna pay the whole thing and, and that's what sixteen has got the language in there. If they give it to Lake Placid, then Sebring, Bayonne Park get it too. But Jerry and I, we already got it on calendars to go down. Um, for them, Lake Placid's present in front of us.
So because we got this tonight, I really didn't read the entire thing, but my other question is, if we do the removal ourselves, is that reimbursable or do we have to hire a subcontractor to help me do it to get reimbursed? Isn't it the assumption that if you're doing it yourself, you're already paying, they're already staffed?
I, I don't have an answer to that. And that's part of the problem is they have the experience. We don't have the experience in this.
Yeah, but I mean, but if we have a tree on Main Street and we have to send someone to do it, if we do it ourselves, is that reimbursed?
I think that.
I, we have a contractor do it, then, then yes. I'm, I'm pretty certain that's gonna be the same. You just have to make sure you, you get all the information that's required.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Are we positioned to know who's gonna do what so that we do get reimbursed? If the county doesn't, then we have to pursue the money ourselves. If we hire a contractor, will it get reimbursed versus us doing it? You know, I don't know that we'll get paid to, to get re, to be reimbursed. But anyway, if you find those things out.
You're not, I mean, I don't think you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars anyway.
No, but we're handling over seven thousand for, for asbestos removal. So, you know, e- every little dollar counts. It's, all it takes is just a question.
I, I think in order to do that, we have to probably go out to RFP, find someone to do it, have them on standby.
But if it's an emergency, you can bypass it.
Right, but on emergency, I mean, if we sent our people out there, because there was a tree and the county's contractor couldn't get to it and we had to remove a tree, we're, obviously, as you said, we're not gonna look for reimbursement. That's, that's our people just moving it out of the way. So, I mean, I see, and if there's area, and here it says if there's areas that we wanna do that we don't want the county to do, we have to give them a map, show them where it is and, and that.
I can't imagine.
And, and this originally was set up so that we had every year asked them to do it under the contract. Uh, we flipped it around and said, we'll tell you if we don't wanna do it because that's how, that's how big the, the deal, the deal is.
I think the point she was making, Mark, is to find out all this information before we get a storm. So that way, if we do have to clean up anything on our own, that we'll be prepared to do it. Right?
Exactly. I thought that was clear.
No, it, it really wasn't because if, if we're scientists.
I interpreted, I interpreted correctly.
Yeah, just find out ahead of time. That way we know what we have expected to expend, you know? I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between Highlands County, Florida and the City of Bayonne Park for emergency disaster debris removal.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in seconds. Are there further questions? I'm not seeing Jim jump up and down, so must not be. Call roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Seidlin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing in.
Thank you. Item number eight. We have the model airplane event. Drafted agreement with comments and recommendations. Does he turn?
This uh person asked uh two meetings ago if um can have an event out at the airport involving um model airplanes and same model, we're talking about large ones. You know, they're uh, I don't know, the one that I saw online, about the size of a Volkswagen.
Yep.
And uh so uh, yeah, so I started doing the agreement and looking at uh my, uh, these types of agreements from all, all around the coun- country and quite coincidentally, Lakeland just added it in March. Uh, I got the agreement that uh they had done uh with uh a different group and I spoke to the, the, their city attorney who I know pretty well. Uh, the uh, I, I can just simply say, I, I drafted an agreement, but I, as I mentioned in my recommendations, I don't uh, I mean, I'm looking at, casting those persons on her, on our staff. This is gonna be a dangerous event for, you know, uh, because you're using airspace. People might try to land when this one's taking off. You got an event where people get killed, you know, there could be not just civil penalties and civil claims, but criminal claims, you know, for using airspace improperly. We don't have the personnel to, to manage airspace, uh, which is gonna have to take.
And is that the only, that's the only factor is that we don't have someone to manage that? That's the only reason why?
Only reason why what?
Because other communities can do this, right? And they haven't had any.
Lakeland just did one, but they, but they have, they have a, 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 a large airport.
No, I know, but it wasn't done on the airport. It was done on the field adjacent to it.
I know, but still, the airspace is the same.
No, but what I'm getting at is this whole thing won't go through because we don't have a person that that can oversee it.
I didn't say that. All I said was, I think you need to hire somebody.
That's what I'm saying. We don't have a person to oversee it. We would have to hire somebody. I, I don't know. I think I need my interpreter.
My question is, is, is when I read this, you're telling us though, I'm right, Rick, what you're saying, that we have to hire an airport manager if we want this event to go through?
I, I said that we need to make them pay for the airport manager.
Yeah, but you, how can you hire airport manager for one event?
Well, that's, it, it would be somebody who has that experience. Maybe they work as an assistant somewhere else. Uh, you know, RFP and I don't know, but it's for, it's for two days. They're gonna pay for it. That's what I suggested. Otherwise, I would, I would suggest, yes, don't have the event because I don't know what it entails as far as, you know, liability, but I know it's not small.
Right. Well, I mean, we have a potential person that's coming out to rent the airport. Uh, if that falls through, there's other people that are interested in renting the airport that might possibly provide such services or we may end up hiring a person of our own. The purp- the purpose is we don't have anyone right now.
Right.
So why don't we put this off for another year and hopefully by next year we'll have that person?
He's coming in, he wanna do this one in December.
Yeah, he was on a buddy crutch because he has to advertise, get the hotels and all that stuff. And I, it just, it won't work if we keep driving it out. A year from now might be more appropriate.
I agree.
There, there. So I know that this gentleman has tried really hard to get it done and it just seems like it's just been
Well, you, we actually.
a falling no to a bold no to a absolute hell no.
Well, I don't, I disagree with that. Jerry might add because he's been dealing with him on his business and insurance and all that, so.
Well, yeah, I, I just simply um, I told him, well, you know, it's, he didn't have corporation. I said, well, we can't contract with you personally. And uh the council, and, and what I've heard from you in the past is you don't want to allow, you know, special events by non uh, not anybody with a nonprofit corporations. Although you can, you just have to make sure you charge plenty of rent for this, not for this.
Yeah, but he went out and did that. I mean, he was in the process of doing everything to be pressed in terms of.
Yeah, I, I think he's been very, you know, very willing.
This only comes down to not having someone at the airport to manage this project.
Yeah, unless, unless you, you can get somebody from FAM, you know, to uh pony up somebody, you know, in the interim, uh regardless of how we come out with the contract, because I don't wanna be, I don't want you to be, feel obligated to go with FAM because they provide this person. And they're gonna be pulled out also if you don't end up with an agreement. And then we're left holding the bag with, with this event.
Yeah, it just seems like there's too many moving parts right now. So I think that just letting him know that we look forward to working with him next year, hopefully.
We, we will. And I just wanna, you know, when you said no, we're not saying no. It's our, our job to bring what we believe could be potential problems to you before you make decisions. Um, and Danielle had asked, she actually, Jerry got the name of the airport manager in Lakeland?
Yeah.
And I'd asked Danielle call, uh, call him and she can pass on what he told her about an event like this.
He took an aerial view of our airport and the location that they're wanting to use is not ideal at all for our airport. He does not see an ideal place at our airport for this type of event. Um, as the main concern that he sees is not being a towered airport. Um, a lot of this stuff with, that happens, like at their airport, they're towered. They have a lot more communication through their tower, um, coordinating these, these flyarounds. And they need so much airspace in order to stay away from each other.
They're, they're actively watching each plane on radar.
Exactly. So not having that capability here, even if we did have staff, it, it still would be a big liability for us.
Yeah, this is the first time.
We don't have that capability to see them.
Yeah, this is the first time I've heard this. And I, I, I agree. I mean, I, that's, that's the sort of thing that I'm not aware of. That makes total sense to me, though.
And that's, that's how Lakeland was able to put off this type of event not too long ago is because they are towered. They have the ability to do it. And on top of, they were way away from the runways. They weren't in any of the approach areas or anything like that.
You'd have to be a tower, a towered airport or be in the absolute middle of nowhere.
Yes, and we don't have enough space for the middle of nowhere.
Right.
Yeah, these things are not drones. They're, like I said, they're the size of a Volkswagen.
Yeah, they fly hundreds of miles an hour too.
Yes, and yeah, I, like, I, when he came out to the airport, I did see one of his, uh, two of his model planes and it was basically the size of his enclosed trailer.
Yeah.
With the wings off.
Right. They're quite awesome.
Yes, they look good.
Dana, you said this was Lakeland?
Yes, um, it's Lakeland Executive. It's not like.
No, Lakeland Linda, it's called.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Is it Paradise Field or something that they used?
That's Greenfield.
It's the same, it's the same airport that does that.
Yeah, I can, they sold all that property to UPS.
He did say there had to be several hundred feet.
Very good. Well, I think we're all in agreement to put it off for at least a year?
At least a year, but maybe, maybe forever if we can't get that resolved.
Right. All right, very good. Moving on to the next item. Item number nine. We have information reference of new laws. Jerry? For the anonymous complaints code enforcement in home-based businesses.
Jerry, may I have seen that? When you sent it to me, put it behind here in case it was questions. I know the pack was all the way getting them.
Yeah, I just had to go back and look at it. Okay, so um those laws have been passed now, anonymous complaints code enforcement and home-based businesses. I, I've asked Central Florida Regional Planning Council to handle the home-based business issue. Um, and I've sent information to um Rick regarding the, or I'm sorry, Randy, regarding the home, the anonymous complaints. And my perspective is we need to work on the uh, the uh, the way complaints are taken in and uh include a line for addresses and um
You're saying report?
I have evaluated the new statute and I think that if a report is made to a city commissioner, a question you asked before, I think the city commissioner has an obligation to, you know, um, provide the address and name of the person that's doing it because they represent the city and it says to the city, it doesn't say to a criminal enforcement officer. And you're representing the city.
Jerry, and so, so you're saying that if someone make a complaint to us that, that this person is running a home-based business out of their house and that we report it?
Well, it's, it's not necessarily home-based. That's a separate issue. But if there's any violation at all, let's say it's high grass or, you know, a house that looks junky or whatever, they make a complaint to you. You need to tell them, like, I, your, your complaint can't be anonymous anymore. So I need your name and the address and understand that, you know, this will be in public record that somebody can ask for uh here on out.
So if somebody wanna complain to Shirley about my high grass, they can't call anonymously and complain to her, they got to say.
Name and address.
Name and address. Then, then she has to report that information to code enforcement.
Exactly.
That's what it said. Explain the part about the home-based business. I didn't get that.
That's the second, that's the second one that passed and that um, they're, they're begging the, the governor not to sign that. But um, basically what it is, it's opened up a lot more liberality with regard to having home-based businesses. Um, you're now allowed to have, I'm just taking for instance, there's a few, few changes. But the big one is you're now allowed to have up to two employees at the home-based business. And um, so, you know, um.
So what about like, okay, cars coming and going?
Yeah, there's some, there's some regulations on it. I don't know exactly what they are.
Yeah.
But I can provide you with the new statute.
I mean, I know a lady down the street that does nails. She has cars coming in and out of her house.
Things like parking and so on, pretty much follow now. It's, you know, it's not, it's, that has not been loosened up as much. But I, I'd have to look at.
So they won't have to go through P and D to get an accessory use permission for a business?
It has to be approved as if it's a uh residential.
Right. So what we're saying though is that they're allowed to have two employees at a business in a residential area. Can they just open up like that or do they still have to go through P and D?
I, I don't know exactly how that, you know, it's still gonna, uh, how it's gonna work exactly. We're working that out and that's why I asked Central Florida Regional Planning Council to put together a, a code change because it clearly requires a code change in order to allow that to be part of the, the uses that can happen at a residence. But the length and breadth of that will have to go over as part of this evaluation of the code when they do that.
So between now and then, what do we do? We just continue with our current planning zoning procedures?
If we get a request for something like that, then I'll have to look at it closely with Central Florida.
So I mean, we can't open like a medical marijuana next door.
And what about parking? You got this whole point, cars coming and going and all that.
It, it does touch on.
It discusses, it does, it discusses parking.
But it will be selective in the terms of the types of businesses. I mean, you can't have a mechanic shop next door.
Ooh, ooh.
You know?
Some of nuisance issues, you know, noise and sound and things like that, it's still fine.
I didn't either. That's, he's asking, but that's just new. So anyway, Central Florida Regional Planning will, will do the assessment of what types of businesses will be allowed in the residential areas based off of this new statute?
Well, it may not be having one of them, but it, but uh, based on this, you know, if, if somebody wants to be a mechanic and wants to have two employees, that may be that we can't stop it. But if they create noise and odor and things like that, then, then we can bring that, that ordinance to bear as nuisance.
I'm gonna go on.
But it's not, it's not considered a nuisance per se anymore like it was before.
This is gonna be as third world as it gets if it's gonna end up being any business opens up. I mean, it's, that's what.
Man, just, just reading it, it looks to me like the heart of it is more for someone who's running an online business out of their home or something inside their home, not necessarily, like you say, an automotive shop.
So I mean, if it, will it require a whole new table of land?
It's attached to your package. It says your for, purposes of this section of business is considered a home-based business.
What section? What paper you want?
I don't have the first, I'm two of five.
Yeah.
Uh, if it operates in whole or apart from residential property and meets the following criteria, if you're looking to be parking related to business activities, so the home-based business complies with local zoning requirements and the need for parking generated by the business may not be greater in volume than would normally be expected at a similar residence where no business is conducted, so i- if that's kind of parking you'd have for a home, anyway, it's okay. But if it's something that, um, you know, if you're gonna have like ten cars out front, that's probably not gonna fly.
And they use a street parking, there is no street parking in the residential area, is that right?
Yeah.
It also means there's not gonna be enforced like handicap parking and ramps and things like that.
Yeah, okay, I see that. And will they have to have an occupational license?
It looked to me, just my opinion, I'm not an attorney, it really doesn't seem anything, but, uh, it looked to me like they would still have to go through the regular process, it's just that the city couldn't deny them an occupational license.
Yeah, if you're looking through, uh, like I said about the mechanics, it says under E, the business activities comply with any relevant local or state regulations with respect to signage and equipment or processes that create noise, vibration, heat, smoke, dust, layer, fumes, or noxious odors.
So Park could move his office into the house?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I actually-
A lot of attorneys' offices are involved.
Yeah, actually, you know, but, you know, the thing of it is, is, um, you gotta bear in mind, this is just with regard to the city zoning. If you have homeowner's covenants, that's, like, you, you can't violate those either, because that's a contract that you have with the rest of the residents. So, I mean, that's, that's one pivotal issue, you need to understand, because I thought about it myself, but I had a house that had homeowner's covenants, you know, and couldn't do it in my, at my previous place.
Going back to the anonymous complaints, if a resident calls and says, you know, there's so-and-so and they're digging a trench, I'm watching it right now as they're digging a trench to their illegal accessory, um, residential unit behind their primary home, and I drive by and I see it.
I'll say, you know, it's-
Uh, then, I mean, I, I don't have to be for that person, I saw it too, I don't have to say so-and-so called me.
But if you're responding to that call?
But if I drive by and I see it, what if, you know, what if we see the same thing on it?
I would never question you.
Okay.
That's only if someone tells you-
I'll never question you.
Come to you and say, that's when the person comes to you and come, make that complaint, and then that's when you take the step forward.
Yeah, so if somebody calls you and you go out there based off that call, you are now lying if you do not provide that information.
But, but actually providing a false public record.
Yeah.
Wait, what did you just say? That's not what she just said.
If I see it and someone else calls me, I can say, "Well, I know what you're talking about, because I saw it as well."
Right, but if you're, if you're there because someone called you, and you don't report that-
You got to tell who called you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, if you just happen to be, well, if you just happen to be walking down the street and you saw it, well, who cares, you saw it yourself.
It's not dirty at night, they're bringing in a garage.
Let me also say-
So as you can see, some flaws in the, uh, reporting, bro.
That's it.
Okay.
I, I think everybody's trying to be turning to your eyes.
Well, the thing about it is, as a councilperson, you know, I see it as my duty to help people get their code enforcement issues polite, you know, neighbors don't want to have, be unneighborly, even though they may see something that they know is illegal.
I know, and, and, you know, the thing of this is, I agonize over this, because I've seen it go both ways, I've seen it where, you know, people, uh, have retribution against people that report against them, and I also see it where people use code enforcement to harass people. So, it goes both ways, I don't know who's right and who's wrong, I leave it to the legislature and their infinite wisdom to make decisions that are, that are good for everybody.
So, Jerry, couldn't you, um, just simply, if someone called you and wanted to be anonymous, couldn't you just simply put your own name as you are the reporter?
No, I think that would be, as we were discussing-
Lying on public record?
Lying on a public record. Right.
Any other questions?
Um, I, I just, um, let's see, there was an issue that somebody raised with regard to the, um, oh, the, you're talking about somebody digging a trench or doing something terrible, uh, one exception to that anonymous is if it's imminent threat of public health-
Right.
-safety or welfare, or imminent destruction of habitat, you know, like weather habits and so on-
Or city property.
Or sensitive resources, so, just because, you know, there's rats maybe running off property, that's not imminent threat. But if somebody is, uh, basically, uh, you know, doing something that's destroying a wetland, you know, like digging up a wet, wetland and put a house in, then, then that would be something you could call and be anonymous still.
Right, and if that person challenged it, wouldn't they then have to defend themselves in court?
What's that, Dave?
In other words, if you take it upon yourself to say that, okay, this qualifies as it being anonymous, and you report it as anonymous, that person ends up getting in trouble, and they decide to take you to court over it?
Well, I, I lead the decision as to whether it's, you know, supposed, can be anonymous or not, and code enforcement, which they can call me and ask me too if they want me to join in on the conversation.
Good luck, Randy. Good luck.
I am always available, he talked about me.
You know, what I actually see is less work, I, I don't see people calling things in, because they won't want to leave their name or, or address, and I just think you're gonna have less work.
Yeah, and there's nothing in here that says that code enforcement can't make, you know, sector inspections like they generally do.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're actively going out and driving around anyway.
But if they're doing a sector inspection based on a complaint, it wants to stay anonymous, that's another story.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, item number ten, we've got Veterans Triangle, council number surely down.
Okay, I had a question about the other one, we'll leave that alone. It's gonna work out.
Okay. If I went too quick, you can back me up.
That, that's okay, it's all gonna work out, I really believe that. So, anyway, um, I brought before you, and I, it was on your desk, uh, about the South Side Veterans Gardens. Um, and some, some people may not even know where it's located, that's the only reason why I put that, the triangle of Tulane and, uh, Perola. I know that most people up here know where it's at. My suggestion, um, is that as you look at the pictures, I believe in my, in my, and this is me, uh, that it's time for a facelift, an update, an upgrade. Uh, when you're out there, it was absolutely beautiful, and I think that it's a very nice garden, but the mulch and all that, i- it's been thirteen years. It was beautifully designed, um, and, and the flowers are still beautiful, and, and it was beautifully designed, and I know that, that, that time, uh, um, Councilwoman Sutherland did the design on it, and it's beautiful, but we need to do upgrades on it and count it, upkeep it by trimming these trees and, and doing the, um, mulch, which is not gonna be that much to do that, and some of these old dying plants, we, and I, I do believe, what's that guy named, Jeremy, he's the elec, he's the electrician for the city?
Graham?
Graham, Mr. Graham, Mr. Graham, I was there when he, he, uh, repaired, because we do have a system, it's brickless system, uh, and it probably needs to start being utilized, because the grass is dead. But my main thing is because, and, and the trees are, are growing over the road, the trees are so good, and now they're growing over that part of, that runs, um,
Over the road?
Yes, it's grown to the road, we just need to trim it up, we just need to beautify it. Now, but the main point for this, I just want you to see where it was, and I think most people know where, where the triangle is at, but it is Veterans Gardens. Uh, the main thing is that we have a flag pole there, and when you're coming down from Harrah McCray toward that, uh, Veterans Gardens, I would, my, my suggestion, and it's not about me, but my suggestion is that if we could add every branch flag, uh, the Army of the Air Force, you, Marines, I'm not unless somebody has Coast Guard, in front of it, it would give it a different look. And I think that we, and it would, and I don't think it's gonna cost that much, I took pictures also of Main Street, and I looked at it and I said, "Oh, this is a PCP fight." They just put it down on the ground, put a flag pole in, or put a flag on. I think that, because every year for every event, not that I'm complaining, because I keep doing that, I have to, I go out there and I put all these flags around the triangle. But if we had every branch flag in front of that main flag pole there, I, I really feel that it would give more beautification to that Veterans Park, and it would recognize each branch at that park, at that particular park. And I just wanted to get some feedback, and it's not gonna cost a million dollars to do this, it would cost ninety thousand, ninety thousand dollars if it is. So I want to see your feedback on this.
So this would be similar to the one that we have in front of the museum that has the different armed services?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so Annie Feeny put that one together, and her organization loves these types of projects.
Who's that?
Annie Feeny, Annie Marie, I don't know how busy she is, and I don't know what their nonprofit has in terms of funding, but they may be a, a source to help get them installed, or at least, you know, lay it out for you, she has a crew for that. Um, in terms of the trees and stuff, I know that Mark has been trying to get some stuff done at City Hall as well as, you know, beautifying here and there, because we have that contract that we're trying to get out to get someone to maintain our, our landscapes in our mall. So if you could get it to where you want it to look like, I mean, I'd be more than happy to help install plants. I volunteer, my services are here at City Hall, and we're just clearing that out, but, you know, I, I know what you're looking for.
Yes.
Um, but I mean, if the city can go in there and just trim, trim the lustrums and make them look a little pretty, it'll just really dramatically improve that.
Trim what?
The lustrums.
Oh, you have to come in there. Could spell that using a sentence, please, nice.
It's the trees that are there.
Yeah, he had something, since these pictures have been taken, someone has went out there and almost trying to plant the mother lollytongue, and they just flopped over.
Those are takeover.
Please don't plant those.
Who put those there?
I don't know who did that, but please don't plant anything out there, let's see.
When I took the pictures-
Did you put them there?
No.
No.
This, this, this- No, when I took the pictures, they weren't there.
And I was gonna say, they could have volunteered there.
They did that afterwards.
Yeah, you don't want them there, you do not want them there.
Yeah, you don't want those there, that was after these pictures.
And they even planted them all the way around the roof, the, the big ball thing is sitting half up, and the big long leaves have just flopped over, and it's about six of them there.
So, uh, I guess, I would just say, Mark, uh, you guys wanna go over and take a look at it and see what you think you can do now, what you think you might be budgeted for?
It would really be nice to have this done before Veterans Day, that's November.
I like it.
That's a weekend, that's a weekend, y'all.
Ma'am?
It's a weekend, y'all, community installation of plants and stuff in whole town.
Well, we'll get it done, it won't be tomorrow.
No, 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 no.
About three people trying to take care of the whole city.
And I do understand that.
And, but I understand you two, and when we see how beautiful City Hall's gonna look with what Maria's gonna do in most hours.
Maria was already-
And just tell me you don't want holders.
No.
You know, if I hear Annie say, "That's a good price," I told her today, I laughed over the weekend, when you were up, he says, "That's a good price on holders," I said, "Did you ever think you were gonna say that sentence?"
Maria's already agreed for the shit going up to the plants, well, we know that Southern, uh, that, um, Councilman Sutherland actually designed this garden in the first place. Now, we do appreciate that, but can we-
It's been a while, it's been a long time.
Can we just add more to it, when we add those flags-
Well, and, and I didn't know if there was sprinklers there or not, if there's sprinklers-
There are sprinklers there.
Okay, well, then they need to be working.
Yes.
We got the ones working on the wall and tell people to drive them over.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. So, that's all I really wanted to bring forward, that we can beautify this, put those flags up there, just like you said on the mall, uh, and I don't know how much it would cost.
I'll call Annie, I'll call Annie and ask her to go down there and look at it and see what size we need, I know she has a flag pole sitting around that she's been trying to donate.
Mm-hmm.
But that's just one, so you need four more, because it's Space Force, Space Force.
Okay, and, and, and will you call her? I hope we give her a call, that can be in there too, we can just all meet up and see what we want to do there.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can meet, Jerry? We can meet.
As long as they're talking about flowers. For the city, you know.
Okay, you can't, no, you can meet with her and tell her what you want.
Oh, we can't talk to people anymore, right?
No, you can't talk to us.
You can talk to people.
You talk to people, but you can't talk to the council.
Right, so I cannot meet you there.
Anything that might be seen, just, no matter how, how incidental it is, you can't talk to the commission.
I understand that, so if we just don't talk?
No, no.
It'd be better for you, it'd be better for you to go with Annie.
Or break, break, uh, discuss it here, you know, as long as you do it on the record and the city commissioner-
It's his own record, m- this, Mister Administrator, can we just look, and it doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Sure, what he said, you can't meet at the garden with the real, you know, just, ma'am, you can't be meeting the real, that's the garden.
No, Maria, you go on your own, Dan.
Okay, we'll hook you up with Ann Marie's meeting, and I'll meet you down there, how's it?
I can meet with you.
So, that works.
That's it, that's, that's it, I'm done, Ma, I'm done.
Mister Manager, what kind of things you got, boys?
Uh, just, uh, every two week, um, update on FAM, uh, they're, they gave their outside council rough draft was given to them last week. They made some, um, suggestions, changes, add-ons, got it back, uh, Friday afternoon, so, um, David and, uh, Bowl didn't have much chance to look at it, like Jerry did either, um, they're gonna look at it further, and we had a meeting this morning with FAM, and as good a meeting as they have been since we started having them, going back and forth, and, um, like I said, we'll be getting back, actually, David Lowell will be getting back with them on some of the things, and Jerry might want to add to any of those in the meeting, too.
Yeah, well, to some point, we're, you guys are gonna have to plan on a, a workshop to go over this contract, or, you know, or a special meeting to go over, because it's gonna take a while, because we can't negotiate enough of both of the contract, that, you know, we're just basically going over this fact finding and, and so on. We'll leave it to you to make the final decision on some of these things.
Has there been a meeting with, uh, FAM and FAA?
They will not meet with FAM, uh, there has been a meeting with, uh, Bowl and, um, um, David Benard, our, our two experts, and, and, uh, we, we participated as well, that we let them lead that discussion.
With the FAA?
With the FAA, FAA, it was very clear that they, they didn't want, uh, FAM at the meeting.
Okay.
But, but we got some, you know, some good answers from them and so on, which helped, uh, clarify some of the issues.
What I'm getting at is all of the things that seem to always come back to, what is the FAA gonna say, how a lot of those things been cleared up?
You said, well, a lot of those haven't been cleared up, we can't say it's been a hundred percent cleared up, right, uh, because FAA won't commit to everything, but, but they did make some things very clear, such as, they don't care about economic development.
Okay.
They don't care about what?
They do care about you getting fair market value of, on, on your, your, uh, rent and things like that, so, we'll get into more details when time comes to discuss it in detail.
What he said was, uh, they don't care about economic development, and, and to, to put in FAA was like, hey, this is the meet, we're not agreeing to anything, we want to see the, the draft.
So the one big question that was the reason for everyone to meet with FAA was, can they lease out, or can we lease out property, that city property that they can mortgage?
Right.
Right, that was the one big question, was that ever answered?
They can, they can mortgage what, what they build.
Right, but the land, they need our airport in order for them to get their loans.
Yeah, they can't put a mortgage on, on municipal property.
So they can't do that, that just washes out their entire, their entire-
What they plan on doing on that, I mean, there's still, still some issues we, we need to iron out, so I, I don't want to say too much, because I, I'm stepping on the toes of, of Bowl and David Benard, so, I, I, I will simply say, it's gonna come back to you, we'll have plenty of time to ask questions and, and go through the details of it, because I try not to do everything detail-wise with them, so you're not getting triple billed for this.
Oh, so that one question, though, still not has been answered?
You have asked it, Olivia.
I believe that, but we're doing all these other expenses and meetings still.
He can't answer, he can't get you to-
The exact term was capital lease, so, I'm asking-
They're still seeking a capital lease, but, um, I-
So if the staff can try to get the FAA to answer this question?
Just that one?
We'll give you an answer, but we have discussed it quite a bit in this, that's an issue, I mean, but the, but the, the, uh, the details of that really are Bowl's area and David's area. And I don't want, I don't want to try and get into the details of it, but, but, um, you know, as a capital lease, you know, that, that, where they're gonna be able to take this thing over for a dollar, that in the fifty years, whatever, that's not gonna happen.
But even if it was fair market value, can they still get a loan on that property that's-
Why don't we just do this?
We can talk to you.
Anyway, that, that was the whole thing of the meeting.
I try and I will, then they, they went through a lot of stuff, that was, what, about an hour and a half meeting with the FAA? We went through a lot of details, and, and, um, uh, they, they answered most things that we requested, but there were some things that they wouldn't give us a direct answer on, they said, we need to see it in a contract in order to know what you're talking about.
So, does it feel favorable for the FAA? I mean, does it feel like it's gonna be a favorable response in the process?
Maria, they're not gonna answer that, move on, leave that alone.
They spent the first five minutes telling us that they're not gonna tell us.
Okay, and you just spent twenty minutes telling you he's not gonna answer.
Mark, what else you got?
Uh, I put the brick building on here, but there's been no other inquiries, I haven't heard anything, first week, we showed it twice, haven't heard anything, so, hopefully this week we may hear some more, but just want to let you know.
But you have two interested parties so far.
We had two actually go in and look at it.
Okay.
Well, uh, budget updates, uh, first I want to, um, do an introduction on Melody, actually, I'm gonna let her, um, introduce herself, she started today, and I, and I told David I have never seen an employee walk in and hit the ground like this lady did, um, right? And her and Danielle been going, as you know, we're behind, you know, we, the planes can catch up, and, um, trying to actually use- and, um, trying to actually use Navoline this year to actually do our budget in where it probably should've been or it's been done on, um, Excel spreadsheet. But, uh, she's very knowledgeable, extremely knowledgeable. Um, when she got here, asked me questions and, and her and Danielle have been working, um, at it hard. And go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Hi, I am, can you hear me?
Yep.
Name's Melody Sauriaker. Um, I came from the city of Frostproof. I was there for fifteen years. Um, in multiple positions the last, um, twelve as their finance director. Um, when I got there, our audits were behind and, um, what is it, twenty-seven findings? The past four years, we've had clean audits, so not one finding for the last four years. So I take pride in, um, you know, having clean audits and, you know, I look forward to working with you all.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
And I've already talked to her about, um, you know, getting proper quotes and bids and all that. And her and I are on the same page there, so she's gonna help me out there and train some people. And she, because she's been in municipal government, she has the sheriff's office and we both know, uh, public records pretty well. And it's one thing, it's needed to take training in the city. And Kim left before we get it done, but, um, we'll get it done. But now, just great, great to have you here. And you and Danielle had some dates.
Um, it's actually Danielle's five weeks, so we have our, um, proposed knowledge rate will have to go on the July twenty-sixth, um, agenda. And then we have our tentative budget hearing on September thirteenth and our final on September twenty-seventh.
So we need to plan workshops.
So is it a notice? Has that, has that been advertised?
No. That's what the July twenty-sixth date is for. We need you to approve the, the, um, proposed trim. So we can send it back to the property freezer to mail out.
Okay. Very good.
And what was the other date?
Uh, September thirteenth is the tentative and September twenty-seventh is the final.
Okay.
And you need workshops as well, right?
You're gonna need to start picking your workshop dates when you want to start.
So we'll pick those workshops at our July twenty-sixth meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Very good.
I have one comment.
Anything else?
Oh, you have to go to count.
We see you, Jim. We didn't forget about you.
All right, so instead of a workshop, we're making a special meeting?
I see why not.
Generally my recommendation, in case you have to vote on something that comes up.
Good point, Jim.
I hear what you said, but thank you.
All right, anything else on the updates?
No, I hear. Okay, I just had one last thing. I was asked by, uh, George Carros if we planned on attending the, um, not banquet, but, uh.
Annual.
The annual Chamber of Commerce banquet. So it's for August the twenty-sixth, August twenty-sixth at five thirty PM. He's wanting to know, um, if we're going to buy tickets and/or if we're going to do a table sponsorship. I know in previous years, um, we decided to get a table sponsorship just because it looks.
We did, we did do a table.
We, we've done both. But what I'm saying is, the last year and I believe the year before, we didn't do the table because we have all the council members sitting at one table. It looks a little suspicious. So for public records and whatnot, typically we, we break it up. So the council can do whatever they wish.
I, I pray that you don't all sit at one table, so.
Okay. All right, so, uh, does the council want the city to pay for tickets? Do we want to do our own individual tickets? What, what do we want to do?
I want the city to pay for the tickets.
Well, there's five of us. I think the city manager should go and he should be able to pick several people to go as well. So I mean, if he wants to get a table for city staff, how about it, I mean, what is it, twenty-five dollars a person?
Uh, no, it's sixty dollars per person for tickets and it's a thousand dollars.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, so, yeah. Just get there early and get your seat and put a napkin on it.
Maybe, maybe if we, if we want the city to expend funds, we should have a vote on how many tickets we want the city to pay for at sixty dollars.
I'll pay for my own. I'll just pay for my own. I'll, I'll, I'll work at my ticket for city staff and I'll pay for my own.
So are we, are we voting to just pay for our own tickets?
No.
Do I hear a motion for it then?
I move that the city, uh, pay for each individual city council ticket.
For just council members or?
For the council members.
So five tickets?
Yes.
You want the city manager as well?
Yes.
No, and other staff members?
I will pay for my own.
They will pay for their own.
So are you proposing five?
Five city council members tickets, yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further questions? Seeing them, we'll call it off.
Councilmember Gray? Yes. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Question passed again, please. And we could donate our ticket, Karen.
There you go. We can't donate.
Yeah.
Because I already got two.
Yeah. And then of course, uh, you know, you can invite your, your spouse and all of that. You'll just have to pay.
Where is the banquet?
Uh, I believe it's going to be at the Jack Aranda. Yeah, it's gonna be at the Hotel Jack Aranda. Um, like I said, August twenty-sixth at five thirty PM. And typically they have some pre-events, you know, some auctions and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, so since we are going to make a presence there, um.
We won't say that.
If they request any logos from the city or anything like that, you want to make sure you get that to them, uh, in advance. They can add any programs if we are entitled to that. Of course, you'll want to let George Carros know if you intend to go and how many people you'll be bringing, et cetera, et cetera.
I have one question.
Yes.
Before we begin, for the evening, I had spoken with, um, the city manager and I guess the city manager is supposed to be talking with, um, the attorney in regards to what procedures that we are going to do as far as, uh, families that has received CDVG grants have the houses built and they are no longer with us for whatever reason. But the house is still there. That was something we had talked about a while back. And, um, I just want to know what, where, have you, you're going to be getting that. And I want that to be, um, in, on our next agenda, so we can discuss that.
Good. Uh, yeah, can you say any more information you have on it?
Because they came up one time before and I think it's, it's up a couple of times.
And in what regard? Is it like, does the family members get it or?
No, the family member deceased was.
Um, it's a CDVG, it's a loan. The CDVG is a loan. They pay twenty-three dollars a month as a mortgage payment. And then the bank holds a note or some agency holds the note. And so the way the grant works is the only one that can release that lien, so to speak, is the city.
Yes.
Which means that those grant funds that they receive would have to go, someone's gotta pay, pay back the loan to the bank.
Yes.
So when a, when a family member dies, um, usually if someone inherits it, they can rent it out or they can continue pay and they can continue paying on the mortgage. But a lot of times these residents or the heirs do not live in Ava Park anymore. So it's hard for them to manage the house because mom passed away. So they're looking for relief in terms of getting rid of that loan so that they can sell the house.
Or do whatever.
Or do whatever they want with the house. So, yeah, and oftentimes the house is what, a ninety thousand dollar home? You know, so do, if they sell the house, should they reimburse the city the balance of what has not been paid? Or do we just say, you know what, we're gonna forgive the entire loan? Antonio Jenkins with the CDVG program, will you be the one to answer that question?
He's sending people to us.
Okay.
Okay, it's the city's decision. We have to make a policies and procedures concerning.
I ask to be uniform wherever you decide. I don't see any difference between family members that live in the city and family members that live in Oregon. You know, to me, it doesn't really matter. They're both gonna have values in the house. You know, they either need to pay those, pay it up or, or if you guys are gonna forgive them, you can leave them all.
That's, that's.
Right, and if you forget, and then when do you put forgiving? Only when they die or when they move away? If they go to hospital, then you're gonna end up with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the CDVG funds that have never, you know, reimbursed, so.
And I have a question, as much as I want to get up out of here because I don't want to rain, you catch us. Uh, Ms. Gray, the, the, the young lady, Ms. Hicks, that came in, is that sort of kind of what you're talking about?
No, that's entirely different. Yes. This, this was a backwater bill that was, that, that's.
Okay, okay, I remember now. You're right, okay.
Okay, was there any resolution there or any movement or?
Uh, I, I think that just, uh, see, Andrew might need to talk about it.
Yes. It's just that I got a call from one of the families today and I brought it up and I will bring it up with the meeting today.
I have healthy skepticism.
Well, and as I told, um, Brenda, I'm gonna call Antonio tomorrow because there was another one in the email that someone else wanted to do it too, so. I'll get, I'll get the information and give it here.
The, the problem is you're basically donating money to a private, private citizen who constitutionally have an issue with, but, and they're, they're not nonprofits, you know, and so like I said, it really kind of breaks that, that whole.
Yeah, and we have said no to this before. We have a real estate agent that came in and we said no and they ended up just renting out the property.
Yeah, which is obviously their option.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's, it's, the loan exceeds the value of the house. They walk away from it like, like most people do. I suppose.
Anything else for the, you go to the city?
I have just one, one thing. Um, I've been working with Mark in, in doing the, the front of City Hall, but in doing so, paying close attention to the City Hall building itself, there's some mortar that has fallen out of the facade around one of the windows. There's a chunk the size of my hand that is just missing. And I looked on the ground, I couldn't see it. But, um, we have to budget something for the building itself, you know, it has to be pressure cleaned and we can't do it, the mold is infiltrated into the mortar and when it does that, it crumbles off pieces of mortar. So somehow we need to get that cleaned out and, um, fixed. And the windows, I know that we have looked at getting the windows redone and it never got redone. When you sit down looking at the windows, there's just cracked wood around the edges of them and stuff. And I'm just worried that the building is gonna suffer, you know, consequences for neglect. And it's the most beautiful building on Main Street, in my opinion. So I'd like to see that we get someone over there to go take a look on what it would be just to fix it. It's been since two thousand and four that the hurricanes. They did something to it then. I don't know what it was, you know, prior to that, but, um, there was some rehab done to the building because they had some cracks in it. And, um, I just would hate to see something happen to it. But that big chunk, you don't see it until you look for it. And then once you see it, you realize, holy moly, this building needs a lot of, of, of love.
Did you show that to Mike Stone?
Yeah, we both noticed it together.
I thought you said about the pressure washing and.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I got one quick thing that we brought up to the, um, CRA Advisory Board. Just in case, you know, we've got someone out there kind of giving bad advice that the, the city has three thousand dollar grants to rehab people's homes and we, Danielle's dealt with a few of them. I've had a couple come in, Jeanette said a couple come in and I asked one where they live, Ava Park Lakes. And I, we think someone's telling them that facade grants are going up to three thousand, but the one I talked to, I said, what's wrong with the house? Well, I got, my drywall got wet during the storm. Where do you live? And, and neither one of them were in CRA, just one of them was in Ava Park Lakes. But I think, were you doing, tell me, someone said, you or Jeanette said that they're hearing this from the church? So someone is giving out information.
It's going up to three thousand, but we made a motion that it goes up on the new fiscal year.
Yes, correct, correct.
But they're, they're misinterpreting it from a facade. They're thinking it's home repair.
Right.
But we are only upping the facade.
Perhaps you could put a newsletter out on the city website?
David can use the city website.
But in case you hear it, maybe you can straighten the people up.
Okay.
Very good.
And your skirts are.
Yeah. Anything else we go to the city? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn? Seeing the opposition?
Adjourn, please. I meant.